All right, it's been seven o'clock. I'd like to open the Charleston planning board meeting for October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. First up, we have a public hearing for ZP Battery Development Company LLC in Conway, definitive subdivision plan two ninety-four. Southwick Road in accordance with Mac General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one T in the Charleston subdivision regulations. And zoning bylaw, the Charleston planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven o'clock in the planning board office in person and on Zoom. Zoom meeting ID two one one two nine two five seven, New George Seaver Country Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charleston, Mass. On the application of ZP Development Company LLC, ten East. One six oh four. Subdivision approval to construct a three lot subdivision known as Incom Way. Off from Southwood Road, Route one sixty-nine, the property contains approximately fifty-five point eight three acres. The property is located on Southwood Road, Route one sixty-nine, the property ID is assessed as now sixty-two block A. Parson six and eighth in the zone. Industrial General IG and Agricultural A. Consult the site plan, application available for inspection at the planning board office and the town courts office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard will be. Will be able to attend the meeting in person at the time and place designated or via Zoom meeting, meeting ID number two and one, two nine three two two five seven. All right, um.
I don't know, I anticipated that. Tom Hoover from ZP. Andrew would be here, I don't know if anybody representing at zero point. On Jim here.
Well, this plan is familiar, was they did do a preliminary, correct Randy?
Yes, it's basically there's been no revisions to the plan as far as what they start through and forward. When Mary planned and the definitive plan, though they back long as the primary plan, they had the. German. Who is going to be adequate property still to the one side who she had done. And the. Sloppy lines and everything, the definitive plan matches what we've done. I don't know.
And now our pack, we have a Graves review from September twenty-seventh.
Yes, and also. If you need that one. Five from. DC engineering. I know that they were. They wanted to make the neat. Make sure the state planning board didn't have any other issues before they. Submitted their final revised plan, so. The subdivision. So just put the. Condition that they. Will have to. Why we do ready period you. Day did.
September twenty-seventh?
Yes, September twenty-seven, two thousand and two.
Which they they responded to the one from this one, the one from DC I have in my package.
It's from the original period.
Okay, gotcha.
And they just as a. Lot savings and time saving, which do not have to do with twice. Um, they are. Wanted to wait until. The meeting to make sure the planning board didn't have any additional changes they wanted to see on the plan because they submit one finalized plan. Before the application was committed to the board at that. Final thing submitted to the board.
Well, there's no response from September twenty-seventh, right?
Correct. I spoke to the engineer and they just. Um, the applicant had asked if they could wait and I said well, it's up to per view of the board, but. The conditions that they have to respond to all the comments of the grades. Shifted to only twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
I guess the answer made over the afternoon is we should. Continue it.
Yeah.
So no one can, no one can answer any questions.
I was in his opinion.
Yeah, correct.
Was it, does anybody else call?
Nothing's changed, that was here. I just.
See if those zones line.
Any members of the community want to comment on it? Just to figure that.
Yeah. Emily Cox on the. Application by ZP Battery Company. Definitive subdivision plan at two ninety-four Southwood Road.
We're expecting to hear a public hearing on the special permit at our next meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's real. Question accordingly to.
So they call mine?
Yeah, the next meeting, the board wants to continue this application tonight.
With the chair, go right ahead, Jim.
Did they go to the. For zoning agreement, they were looking at trying to get around some zoning, didn't they, like six or seven items with the zoning report of the bills, I thought. There were a lot of waivers.
Yeah, there were waivers. Yeah, there's a lot of waivers to go over.
Yeah.
And I think that.
Does that happen when it actually gets into?
Yeah, or the board. The actual waivers individually, I mean, they're they're anticipating trying to do this like. Something like the solar fields where it's done before is basically a paper called the SAG. However, if. You know, in the whole. Condition of waiver that they're who based on this plan, however, if any future development was done, that they would have to complete the road. The reason we back before the board to. That, you know, you're grading the way it was based on the current plan, however, creating changes over there. It's actually on all the applications that they. Would. Um. Link the waiver is based on a condition that was built and proposed here, and then if they. Decide to do anything more than what is proposed on the plan, then they would. The board has a. Ability to say the way it was only good for this set. This for this project, but yeah, something else.
Would they have to submit another? Or site plan application for any changes or?
Or they would have to, if there's going to be some different kind of commercial development or any type of development over there, yes, they would have to submit new plans. At that point, there would be a time they would have to improve it to road standards and. A lot of those waivers have to do with the whole world.
Yeah.
Because.
All right, if I have no questions or comments, their motion to continue the public hearing for ZP Development. Uh, Incom Way at two ninety-four Southwood Road.
This should be what that.
But the board will have to like go through each wave individually.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Right.
You know, as we're going to the. Yeah. They choose to approve the plan.
Yeah.
Our next meeting on.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Want to continue to that meeting with a following.
What's that?
Yeah, continue nineteenth, I'd say.
To nineteenth, there were two of the applications are already scheduled for the nineteenth meeting. For the special firm, so I assume they would have somebody at that meeting, now I make sure that somebody at that meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till September, I'm sorry, what was it? October nineteen.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have somebody on the phone? I don't know.
Yeah, this is Jason DuBois.
Well, we just wanted to continue that one.
Yeah, that one.
All right. All right, next up, we got the public hearing for ZP Battery Building Company LLC Larry's Way definitive subdivision. Plan Sturbridge Road Griffin Road. All right, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one T in the Charleston subdivision regulations and zoning bylaw, the Charleston planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October fifth. Two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh five in the planning board office in person and on Zoom, Zoom meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven. New George Seaver Country Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charleston, Mass, on the application of ZP Development Company LLC, ten. East Washington Street, West Mass, oh one six oh four subdivision approval to subdivide to existing. Lots into five lots from Griffin Road, Sullivan Road, and they propose to pull the second as Larry's Way off from Sturbridge Road, Route twenty. The property contains approximately forty-four point nine two acres, the property is located. Every road route twenty, the property IDs are assessed now. Twenty-seven blocks, two and three in its own industrial general IG and business enterprise. Comes to this. Nation available for inspection at the planning board office in town courts office during regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard. Will be able to attend the meeting in person at the time and place designated or via Zoom meeting, meeting ID number two and one, two nine three two two five seven. Uh. This is, yeah, again, we. And this was a preliminary payment plan, there's now a definitive. Uh, application. In front of us, and I believe there's a. Graves report in here.
There is a grave report, this is the.
Yes, the.
Yes.
From September twenty-seven.
Yeah, they submitted the reports all and sending them down.
Yep.
You'd like me to speak on these or?
Go ahead, Jake, if you want to give a quick overview on this one, that'd be great.
I do.
Okay. Yeah, so. So these applications were through preliminary, now the definitive subdivisions have been submitted and Graves did send out review letters on these. Um, we're working on those revisions now, we are. Planning to do some test pits next week out at the recharge areas as well with with Mike from Graves. Uh, once we have that done, then we can wrap up, you know, the. The other revisions and get it back over to Graves and hope to get a. A clean slate for the for the following hearing. So I guess, you know, at this point, if there's any. Additional questions, I think we mostly went through them all in the preliminary phase, but if there's anything additional, we can try and answer those or wait till the next hearing.
So you're already planning to meet the Graves, so we should. Probably continue this to the next meeting, so you've got a chance to meet with them and. Take care of any of the issues there in the grave before.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone from the board have any, because. I'm sure it still needs to respond to these grades. The greatest report as far as the items that he brought up. All right, there's no questions or comments, we have a motion to continue the public hearing until October nineteenth. For zero point battery. Development LLC Larry's Way, it could have subdivision plan in Sturbridge Road and Griffin Road.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for ZP Battery Dad Larry's Way until October nineteen.
We'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I H N S, thank you, Jake, have a good night.
All right, thank you, Tom.
All right, next up, we have a public hearing continued from White Development, for reduced parts lots, special permit and one conforming A and R. While on Smith Road, the applicant has requested to be continued until October nineteen.
Well, we did not receive the, or Mike Andrick did not receive. Uh, his engineers report until. Uh, Monday of this week, so Mike hadn't had a chance to respond to that report till they are trying. Uh, requesting to have it continued to while in nineteen, on nineteen.
All right, we have a motion to continue the the public hearing for White Development.
I'll make a motion to continue the Wake Development, special permit until October nineteenth.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I will abstain. All right, next up, the Gare LLC Jennings Road Extension subdivision annual extension request. To nine fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, we have a letter here from. Uh, Russell Jennings from Gare LLC to whom it may concern, please consider this as our request for our interview on the Jennings. Road subdivision, thank you, Russell Jennings here LLC.
This, um. This has been a very active subdivision, they continue to build house, so it isn't like one of some of the subdivision just been sitting there. There's nothing going on, so. I would recommend the board continue the subdivision pool, and Mike Andrade, you know, as progress goes on within the subdivision is over there, so. It's not laying by the wayside, sadly. Between. The in our peer review engineer and the conservation agent. Sites free monitor, the subdivision being monitored constantly, so.
We're all here, review things up to date and.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to. Prove the annual extension for the Jennings Road subdivision till nine fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, we have some A and Rs.
Yes, we have two A and Rs, first one is actually.
No record.
Actually done by Rush Jennings' daughter, with Axel Schmidt and Sabatation. Um, this, 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 they. Full blown book of your brother Jennings family owned a number, a lot, trinket of rain, so. They lost it during the subdivision on, there's five lots total, fifth lot on the second page, but the other one on the. Perp, they're all conforming law, that also. Kurt Masters look at him because I'll make sure that you don't have any issue from a zoning standpoint. And there's a very straightforward subdivision. That by the law. Took. One lot into a total of five lots.
Are there anything on the lots right now?
No, they're all vacant lands, I don't want to understand, I mean, it doesn't matter, but it sounds like it's all for various family members.
Come home.
If you. Look at the location plan, this is still where the the five oh eight. Property is, but they own, you know, they own a lot of land along Bookfield Road itself, so.
I do have a motion to approve the A and R lots creating. Five lots.
Make a motion to approve the Brucefield Road Jennings five lots. With that required.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Tell me, so you gotta, you gotta sign.
Yeah, make sure you sign both pages, please. So, yeah, of course, there's two pages of the paper stock as well.
Yeah, ripped up on. A little bear. Fast them down, I'm sorry. Well, it is hogging. Um, yeah. I don't have to ask it, so.
Oh, I don't either, I got the.
Well, do you? They have. All right. You need to sign the papers, too?
Yeah.
Two. Yep.
Billy, you need this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't.
Need to date those, Randy.
What's that?
Just need to date them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Stop, get the frame very metal, sure room. Nice, uh, A and R.
This is the unusual subdivision, well, A and R, but. In Cambria Metal Road, which is a lot of. Smaller properties and on this. Particular. A and R, what they have currently. It's two houses on the same lot. If you look at. House number six and house number four are currently on one piece of property, so what they're trying to do is subdivide the land up. In this land in the back here. Um, Kurt Masters and I went through this, he also confirmed it with the attorney because he won't get out. Drunk and silverstein, but to make sure that this was. Comply with the A and R. Um. By law, because this. Unusual way it's being done, so house number six is going to go with parcel A is going to get attached to the property with house number six. And then parcel B is going to get attached to the property with house number four. So they're they're pre-existing lots and they they don't meet all the requirements of the existing. Bylaws, but because they're pre-existing with houses on them and they're being made more conformant. They actually said section of the bylaws. That it can be done. Using this method. We're very careful about whether this can be done as presented here. All right, but right now, the house number four and house number six on one lot, this back piece is actually on its own parcel, its own parcel land, so they're taking. These two halves, dividing this and having adding to these lots.
Are they planning on on doing some renovations or or building or, I mean, what?
Um, well, they they, right now, if they leave the houses and they renovate them, they're fine, they're. They're talking about moving house number six back here. Which Kurt said now that's going to trigger a variance. It's pre-existing non-conforming right now, but once they try to move that house.
Yeah.
Then it opens up the can of worms for variance, because, you know, once you tear the house down, it's like you're starting with vacant land, so.
Are they aware of that?
Huh? Yes, they are, so that's what's making them think twice about what they're going to do. I, it would be nice, you know, makes sense that they put a house back here to give more room, but it will require them. Applying for variance to the ZVA to do that.
Are they going to fight over a half of the shed? Oh, to be removed, okay.
Yeah, shed being removed, the same owner owns all the land. Um, he actually owns all of this, and I think he owns number ten as well.
I have to remove motion to approve the A and R to combine these. House six with parcel A and house number four with parcel B to make them more conforming.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this, you know, for Clamber. Second that.
All right, all those in favor?
I have a question.
We're gonna have, yep.
House number four, what if he decides he wants to put it over there? The same thing would hold true and start all over again?
Yes, eat a lot, because eat a lot is still a non-conforming lot, so if, but I guess house number four is a better house, I don't know what. House number six is small and. You know, they like to do it, but it's whether it's worth it, you know, because moving the house, you get a septic and everything that goes with it, so.
Okay, as long as I understand.
So we have a motion to second?
Yep, we did the, yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, shenanigans.
Hurt me, am I allowed to take a mask? I forgot. Thank you, yep. Thank you. That's great, thank you. Sorry. Aye.
Hello.
Yeah, everybody get out.
There's a couple of people in the waiting room when you get to ask.
What's that?
Couple of people in the waiting rooms and get that. I think they'll put it next time, so. There we go.
Recording in progress.
All right, next up, we have an informal discussion with the Evan Turner from Aries Power Systems.
Actually, that's it's.
Yeah.
Forty-five, so.
We'll turn the hearing off.
So, yeah, okay.
It's dumped here.
Yeah, this is.
We'll be right back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, do you want to, I mean, we can do the minutes.
Do you want, want to be in the minute?
Yeah. Good. Yeah, I'm thinking there might be people that want to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Go right ahead. Okay. Yeah.
Point. Somebody picked that up.
Yeah.
One day, one day. Is the streetlight been installed on him and him and him yet? I don't think so. But though by.
No, actually, it's just Tim Green himself back to. Said to email to announce to Green, like, where's the light? And they did not respond.
Come on, that's not like them.
But also. Last time I checked, the warrant's closed now, and he did not submit the application for the road acceptance. So.
Oh, man. He did not.
Last time, last time I checked. Does that goes weapons office? And that hasn't been done. So regardless of everything else, Roger Shetland says the. You know, final. Matter of the year is taken care of.
Just didn't realize that the warrants closing came from.
Told him.
Okay. There's too much. Yeah. Have a.
No, I actually went to the selectmen's office with him and Mary explained to him, you know, you have to do this stuff by a certain time.
Okay.
It's not just, you know. Submit to date.
Well, hey, I'm ready. Yeah. What are the odds for Nick? Anybody want to? Take the odds, play some bets? I'll be there. When it's going to be canceled, well, could you lead on the state by then, right?
Yeah, there you go.
So you can wager on whether it's on the benefit or.
After digging through, I I was looking for something else and. I was looking for another, we were looking for old minutes for something else. And in 2017, we were dealing with the board who's dealing with them, the same. Five years later, and still wasn't there at all.
Same construction fee.
I always like trying to school with.
It shouldn't be so much.
Fireplace in the college works, though, right?
Yeah. Turn the key on with the fireplace.
Yeah, yeah.
Fantastic point, Stone.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from August 10, 2022.
The second name?
All of them in favor?
I.
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 But stay. Do the seven forty-five again. Yeah, but you. All right.
Close now.
Yep, all right. Up next is the informal discussion, Mr. Evan Turner from Erie's Power Systems should discuss with the folks five oh eight centric solar campus. Slash large solar array facility located at the five oh eight international site locations off of Brookfield. Whoa. How's it going?
Hey there, everybody.
Hello.
Uh, so I'm Evan. I believe you all know Iris.
Yep.
Uh. I guess what we're here for tonight, or at least what I'm here for tonight, to be very clear for everyone, the minutes, et cetera. This is an application. It's not a normal, you know, a butter notified public hearing. Uh, it's basically a chance for me to give you guys a heads up on what I'm thinking about. And what you might see in applications and discussions down the line, because it's nice to not hear about things through the grapevine. You know, but accordingly, you know, it's not a approval disapproval kind of conversation. I like to stay way far away from the normal. Public hearing processes when I'm not in a normal, you know, notified public hearing. So, uh, yeah, I do these with most of my applications, just you get in the same muscle memory of normal meetings. Which aren't always applicable to the heads up stuff. Since nothing should happen and will happen without being normally, you know, notified. So. What I'm looking at for this run of solar, it's the same physical concept you're used to, but the scale of it is very different. What I have under contract now. Uh, starting in Sturbridge, uh, both sides of Lad Road. Uh, which is about 200 acres in total on that side of the line. Uh, some of Mr. Matt Gagnar, some of, uh, Mr. Ken Naskandiglio under DJ Incorp. Who then also has some land in Charlton across the line there, south of the five oh eight campus. The majority of the five oh eight campus is under contract, excepting the course area in the middle. And of course, access to that. Uh, that obviously is under an operating permit for that site. The idea is to put the solar around on the rest of the. Five oh eight slash Jennings land under, you know, several different ownership groups. Uh, Branch, Iris, and then the family trust each have some of that campus. Mr. Orin Cisco is under contract for his, the majority of his property there adjacent to five oh eight. Uh, excepting his house and immediate surrounding areas. Uh, with some access if necessary to a north Sullivan Road. Uh, I have, um, Mr. Brent Saloo under agreement for. The area to the west of five oh eight, you know, as you know, kind of it's five oh eight, but not the Jennings, uh, property there. And then I do expect to as well have an agreement with him, hopefully on his piece there across the pond for more and up against the turnpike. Where he burned it. And then north of that, uh, across Brookfield Road. Uh, the Kozlowski's were nice enough to give me rights to land. About a thousand feet off Brookfield Road in the back in the woods. Uh, behind the fields there, left and right of Brookfield Road where the, uh. Some new houses have been built recently. And then effectively north of Jennings Way subdivision in the back. And also hope, expect to get, uh, Legend LLC, uh, the Richardson's who have some acreage back there to match. Uh, so about 80 acres back there. And then eventually in East Brookfield, hopefully getting a couple more folks, but that's not so much, you know, in connection here. All told, that looks like about 800 acres, uh, you know, with majority of that in Charlotte. That looks like 10 to 12 arrays in Charlton by the larger rate map. It ends up being, you know, one big campus, but a bunch of different individual arrays on separate meters and separate. Plugins because they're all priced a little differently to the utility when we sell the power. So they all have to have their own meter. But it from the outside looks like one big array. The reason, uh, we put this together. The utilities are upgrading, uh, the network here. Based on long-term forecast for how much solar the state needs and has been applied for in places. And you guys, uh, for better or largely worse, have gotten more solar than anyone else in the state. Uh, as you just happen to sit in a town with a bunch of power lines and substations nearby. With a bunch of land that's big enough to do solar the way they did it. And, you know, encouraged in the previous incentive programs. That way is largely dead from a business case standpoint, because all the power lines fill up. When all the local power lines fill up and you can't plug in, and you can't afford to build a power line at a million plus a mile. You stop doing that. It's very much an early stage of solar kind of weird ecosystem that only lasts that long. Every other state's going through the same thing. Because those poles already exist for the customers, the entire. Incentive program and solar play to so far with the state, it's kind of predicated on the fact that stuff already exists. For the solar developers to use. The customers already built the poles because they needed electricity. Hey, guys.
Hey, everyone.
Uh, they already built the pole, so they needed electricity. And therefore they were easy enough to take advantage of. This is George and Steve. And Emily with Steve. Yes, there we go. Uh, they are helping me put some of this campus together. Uh, you know, you'll recognize, I believe, George from the Amazon work. Uh, with the Kozlowski property. And maybe Steve, uh, from the same, I think Steve's those two. Yeah. And so the idea of doing one-off 20-acre stuff is basically dead. Because power lines are full in most of the state, especially here. But there's still a lot of demand. Ballpark, big picture for the state. Need about 10 times the amount of solar we've done so far to meet this carbon neutral goals. You absolutely can't even start to think about doing it the same way that you've done it so far. It's just insanity. You know, every which where, unorganized, pick a 20-acre parcel. Roll the dice and see if you can make it work. Does not work, it scales. So what I've done here is put together a large campus. The idea of that campus is you get so big that you can basically build a substation. You have to get big enough to hit that critical mass, be able to afford your own substation. Which is. Probably the way solar is most naturally sized, the small stuff like 20 acres and 10 acres, you've seen a lot of. Very much a creation of Massachusetts. And there, we like smaller attitude. But it just ended up meaning that you got 15 solar arrays instead of three, because everyone works to the capacity of the power lines. And that's what ultimately drives. Uh, solar development in area so far. Any questions? Thoughts, or I keep going?
Are you talking, we'll have a substation?
Some, it's either upgrading the existing one there on Route 20. Or building a new one, or maybe a combination thereof. Uh, that is largely utilities jurisdiction. We mostly tell them where we want the plug-in. And then they give us solutions because once we run power lines up a public way or across them, they have. The say in how it works. Since those lines also do serve the public.
Oh, good job.
I think there is only three. Sites available. Didn't we limit that in the last?
The bylaw is one of the topics that I wanted to cover tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, you've got a lot of applications. I don't know if they've all been built, but they've all been. At least kind of spoken for.
So basically, if you're not in the queue. You don't get it.
Yeah, so that's part of the interconnection, you know, process of being queue interconnector, queue here.
That's, so that was the intent of the law.
Mm-hmm.
So I, and I'm not, I think the town spoke pretty clearly.
Yeah, I I know that. It's been a big history to learn that. Yeah, I didn't have any projects in Charleston, but you could see it as a. I mean, years ago, I remember doing solar, like Charlton's got site plan review. That's a favorable. Setup for solar, and then it got special permit, then it got.
Snowball's chance in hell at this point, so I I appreciate your.
Thing, but that's, that's what I'm trying to, with the meeting avoid.
Yeah.
Because that's a judgment on an application that isn't made.
Yeah.
Uh, that I think is generally speaking, best to avoid and you're not in a public hearing process, so. In that, that's a good segue into a big topic of that. It is. Unlikely, I judge, uh, that. That bylaw. Is congruent with the state law. I know the folks voted on it here. Uh, the Supreme Court ruled on a case this summer. You may have heard about Tracer Lane. Two LLC v. City of Waltham. Are you guys familiar with that? Case at all? Storytime.
No.
So the city of Waltham, it's about solar zoning exclusively, went to the Supreme Court. City of Waltham had a resident and landowner. On the edge of their city next to, I believe, Lancaster. Who wanted to, had the house lot at the end of the subdivision and owned the land behind them in Lancaster, the next town over. Where solar was allowed as a permit industrial land behind them. But they were in a residential zone. The bylaws of Waltham said no commercial scale solar in residential zone, full stop. It's allowed in industrial, which is a small percent of their town and already built out. They wanted to use that house as for the driveway through the property and power lines to reach the back acreage where it was permissible and permitted. And the city of Waltham, based on the fact that their bylaw said no commercial solar, which the access becomes the use. Is allowed in that district. You can't do it. Uh, the landowner thought that was incongruent with the Dover amendment and its specific solar protections. Same thing protects churches, schools, daycares, forestry farming. Solar, and then one other thing that I've skipped in my mind, anyhow. And the land court agreed with them. Uh, basically saying it's not congruent that you disallow solar by zoning district. Uh, the city of Waltham, for some reason, made a mountain out of a molehill and appealed. Uh, because the land court doesn't have precedent, but the appeals and Supreme Court do. And the Supreme Court took the case straight from the appellate court, uh, which is their prerogative and ruled on it this summer. And confirms and a little bit some, uh, what the land court's ruling was. Basically saying that it is not appropriate for the Dover amendment to. Disallow solar categorically. That case by zoning district, but otherwise in general. Uh, you know, so every property on its merits based on itself, not other stuff. I understand why your town voted that way. You guys were overwhelmed with junior varsity solar applications from every developer. Who could find someone with 20 acres that was wooded. And they ended up with a whole lot of applications. Some of them not the best, but that's what you had to work with. I'm also very frustrated, and this is just a separate comment. The state, you know, worked on change of the solar program for years and making it bigger, and not a single town got like a memo or a heads up. Because it takes you guys a long time to change bylaws. And to know what to change them to make it reasonable regulation for a certain kind of system. And they just changed that and all the towns weren't ready for what was coming. You know, they went from a couple hundred megawatts applied in a year over the state, uh, to 1,800 in 2018. Just overwhelmingly huge, John. So. That is, brings us to today. Your current bylaw has a single useful exemption. Uh, that municipal systems are not counted towards the. Uh, limits of the, you have a five-megawatt limit on the system and a 30-count limit, which you would have hit. So I have, you had very preliminary thoughts, you know, one thing I spoke with, uh, the members of, uh, the administrator and a select board member and a couple other folks. No quorum, you know, for boards, but a smattering. That there is a mechanism there that might work. Uh, that, you know, the town takes the land and in some way it becomes a municipal system. That sidesteps your bylaw, but of course is a whole other thing. That's not, but it's not.
Time out, time out. A municipal system was supposed to be for the school.
Okay, the bylaw reads and has those words in it, but that's part of the discussion.
This as a municipal system should. Supposed by power for the municipality.
I I understand the interpretation. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying literally what is written in the bylaw is what is there. Intent is relatively. And perception, that's not important, but I'm not expecting to magically like, oh, you can't make a town want to do that, right? That's a town choice if there was some partnership that worked. Otherwise. I have basically two choices, you know, a door I don't want to go down and a door I think is better. This campus. To set the stage, basically has three neighbors that are residents. Uh, it's, you know, 800 acres, but within 300 feet of trees. There are three houses and they are basically next to Ms. Jennings on Brookfield Road on the backside of the five oh eight campus. Otherwise, it is neighborless, you know. 70, 80 acres up north of the Jennings Way subdivision. 300 plus feet of trees that you'd leave. It's back in the woods so far, you can't see it. And otherwise, up against the turnpike, up in Sturbridge against Lad Road, up in the five oh eight campus. It is not visible. Uh, just based on the size and the location of the campus, which is important to me. It's not meant to shove up next to houses like the current solar. Systems or solar incentive program encourages by, you know, making it small systems that can only afford to go where the power lines already are. So therefore they go where the houses are, that's where the power lines are. It was, it was kind, it's unintended consequences, uh, from a hyper-focused design of the state program that I have a polar diatribe. What I would like. To happen in a perfect world. Is that I can earn the trust of the town and the boards that this is a value positive endeavor. And that I don't have to do a trip to court at some point to look at the bylaw and see if I can do this and if it's congruent. The way I think that makes the most sense, if it's not some version of a municipal partnership that does qualify. Which of course has a lot of diligence and judgment behind it, not mine. Would be some kind of overlay district put on the specific properties. Uh, to allow for like a major solar projects district. That exempts it from that, so you don't have to open up the rest of town. But where it makes sense and doesn't otherwise. You know, cause the same problems as before, it just doesn't open up that can of worms. But I would tell you if me, someone else. Your bylaw, unfortunately, especially after Tracer Lane. Just doesn't look congruent, and sooner or later someone will run through that wall. Uh, because it's kind of like saying, I'm sorry, we have enough farms or churches or whatever in town, and they can only be so big. Similar protections apply. It doesn't mean you can't regulate these things to be nature and intent of the zoning districts and community. But mostly that. But mostly that means larger setbacks not being in your face uh to fit, you know, suburban slash rural aesthetics and the appropriate stormwater on the normal solar stuff. Uh I don't want to be that person, but obviously I've put together a campus here that I think the landowners, uh you, me through them have the right to do. But I, you know, as much as I can absolutely, you know, find a way, the goal is to be cooperative, and that was the first. You guys are the first stop that, you know, after I met with the administrator and the selectman and the town planner and I believe the assessor as well, you guys were the first step. Uh because if this is going to work like I hope could, what it should, I, I need your guys' input on how it works. Uh so far as, you know, what kind of process did work? What kind of designs, locations, setbacks? I can give you some my thoughts on those, but you guys are the folks that the town is appointed to judge that kind of stuff in general and in specific.
All right, go right ahead, John. Through the chair, so when we go to town meeting, there's a bylaw entity. And it goes to attorney general, and they look at the language. And they tell us if it's correct in order to if it's not to the conformity letter of the law. And then they allow us to approve that.
That is
That's your opinion.
That, I'll tell you, that is somewhat accurate.
Well, what, so what we've been doing all these years is somewhat accurate.
Yes, that's what the attorney general does is decide if on the face of something, it is blatantly illegal or incongruent with the law. They do not put themselves in the position to act as a court system on proposed bylaws. So what reasonable regulation is ultimately relies on a judicial interpretation, which is not their role. So by example, if you had said
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so
So it's time out. So you're saying you don't want to be that person, but you will be that person if you need to.
That's, I think the landowners have the right to do it, and that my only remedy would be, I mean, that's how you settle those. The brass tacks, yes. I wouldn't be here if I didn't, if I wasn't willing to do it. I will do almost anything I possibly can to avoid it. Because I don't think it's the, the best way to do this at all. It's time and money and to a result that you already have an answer for, because they've literally just ruled on it.
Which in that case more about the access to the site, not the there was no solar being built in Waltham, it was the access.
That's what it started as, but it was important, what they specifically ruled on. Why Waltham denied it was not what it was. It was commercial salt scale solar in a zoning district is what it was denied. So that was the first thing the court had to ask. So a couple layers of questions. Was, is you access for this, you know, a threat to health, welfare, safety? Because that Dover amendment would allow you to prohibit it if it was. Well, it wasn't, you know, they decided a driveway and power lines just couldn't be. And then two, is it congruent to disallow solar by an entire zoning district? That was, because that's why Waltham denied it, not of a specific item, just because it wasn't allowed. That didn't have to go that far down. Your building inspector said, not clearly not allowed, so not allowed. And that's, that's what they ruled on, but there's, you know, you can go read the, the, you know, the decisions. You know, the land court then, you know, backed up by the Supreme Court. You know, I did provide the select uh member, the members there and the town administrator, some documentation on, you know, the lawyers, all the fallout of like, this is what we think this ruling you know, causes. Uh but basically it becomes every property judged on its merits.
Mr. Chair, go right ahead, Bill. Uh so is it, you had mentioned, uh you've obviously done a lot of research here, Mr. Turner, I appreciate that. So you, you've mentioned there was a lot of, uh you had some properties under contract and just for jurisdiction ownership, you mean you, you've optioned property uh to lease
Purchase for the most part, lease in one case.
So stuff divides some chunks of property section up.
Purchase outright.
And our system
Yes, uh Mr. Cisco is a lease. Otherwise, uh I believe all of my contracts are purchased for the entire parcels mentioned with a little bit of custom for the Jennings five oh eight area.
And the purchases, the one owner Aries power system?
Yeah, it's my contract. So I'm the purchaser on that, you know, so in that case, yeah, I step in kind of as the landowner to see if it works, I would own the land.
And then, so do you see new substations being required, poles, lines being required?
For that part of the campus, the idea is that it's mostly in its own camps. So there will absolutely be electrical equipment like that. Uh there are power lines that north of the turnpike uh have a little bit of, you know, go through related of town of Sturbridge and town of Charlton right before there's right opposite the Toll Plaza, or sorry, the Travel Plaza, and then the substation on twenty, and they go, you know, jump across the turnpike. That's kind of the west end of my campus. Mr. Gagners land abuts town of Charlton land riding along the turnpike in that weird section that's Charlton next to Sturbridge. And then town of Sturbridge has the land immediately north. And then on the east side, uh hopefully I'll be riding all the way over to Brookfield Road sooner or later, depending on what else I get under contract.
But it's probably big enough where, what, what do you think the total size in generation?
One fifty to two hundred, which is two to three times what you have in town to date. Then of course, that's pre wetlands delineations, all sorts of stuff to
Just roughly.
But it's the idea is it's all back there, you know, it's not the size of the array that matters so much to feel the community, it's basically how visible is it? Uh really lays into folks. The idea is you get so big and contiguous that you don't end up having a thousand neighbors around you, because you can get land that doesn't have to have a thousand neighbors around.
And how about battery, power storage?
All, all over it, uh every array, you know, so would have stuff. That's fundamentally now part of the solar system.
And do they categor, like, is that separately measured? It's so much storage of megawatts and so much generation of
Yeah, it generally scales with the system itself.
Like a one to one?
Uh well, I mean, it's not, yeah, so yes, but that's depends how you plug in the batteries. Sometimes you plug them in on the grid side of the system, so they can discharge at the same power. But I typically do, and it's the future of stuff and the present, hopefully, if you did it better. Is you plug it in next to the system like it's all in the DC power bus. So there's one connection to the array, and then there's a battery that's more than one to one. They can digest anything. And it can, you know, discharge the arrays theoretical output for five to eight hours, you know, they get bigger and bigger as, you know, they mature, because then you can provide more of a full firm product. Uh if I may, just jump back to Mr. Smith, your question before. Uh I believe the town of Waltham, not Waltham, uh South, uh
Waltham is a city.
Yeah, Waltham is a city, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh it's down on the south shore. Uh there was a town down there whose name is now escaping me that begins with a W. I believe, uh who did have a bylaw rejected by the attorney general. Like the, went far enough and a lot of it just came down to like, this is de facto prohibition, which is not allowed. You know, they
I'm just saying, you probably would have to go here.
Yeah, and I don't like, I don't like that door.
You're gonna have to.
It's possible, it's, I've got the time and the patience, uh but hopefully there's, you know, a way that can sidestep that, like do an overlay district that gets you there, but like I am a bit of a harbinger of the, you know, what's coming. Uh I am certainly larger, more organized by myself. I have about twenty-five hundred acres in the state under contract, including this. Uh mainly in two giant campuses, and it is another fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred acre campus I have up in Winston. So other folks eventually will show up and be willing to run through the wall. Uh the utility based on where a bunch of solar was applied for in part formulated where they wanted to do a bunch of upgrades to the grid network to have more solar over time. Because that's what stopped a lot of the solar the last couple of years. Is that they hit the limits of the current system and had to upgrade it, that's a five, ten year process. So they spent three years studying everything, and now they've got to build it out for the next eight. But when that's done, they have planned the Charlton, Southbridge, Sturbridge area for a hundred and sixty-five megawatts of increased connection in the transmission network plus substations to match. There's probably about thirty to fifty of it is spoken for with legacy stuff. So they just, they, you know, it's not the perfect system to look where a bunch was applied for and then put a bunch more there. But that is a large part of how that was decided and studied, because they can only upgrade to an extent that they see people's demand for plugging in. So you guys are just in a weird spot. A lot of power lines, relatively large parcels. But I mean, most of the easy stuff has already been done or tried. It's, you got to be bigger and organized, which hopefully is a much more professional and courteous and cooperative structure.
So what you need to do is convince the town that an overlay district is best for them.
That's broadly speaking, that's the
You need to convince the, the board too to, to
Support it. That's door number one that I need to earn my way to.
Have you have an example of much as overlay district has that some other towns approve this?
So one, so some towns so far, and this is, I'm thinking of one specifically, the city of Fama, town of Fama in Cape Cod does all their silver by overlay district, you know, so whenever someone comes with an application goes in front of the town meeting and they vote up or down on adding the overlay district to those parcels. That's a high risk, high reward strategy. Because otherwise it's not allowed, and as long as they keep saying yes, they won't get sued. Uh so I can give you overlay district language, but effectively it's a, I did, I'm sorry, I'll step back. I did get Fama over a twenty twenty campaign basically for a year to put an overlay district over a hundred and fifty acres of the Cape Cod Country Club, which the owner put up for sale and came under solar contract with me and my folks. And that was also came with a bylaw change, because they needed to update their bylaws, because they designed and one array was in an old sand pit, so they designed a bylaw for a sand pit. Doesn't apply, but it applied the whole town if you were in the overlay district. So we updated their bylaws like this is reasonable, you need better screening, because you didn't think about screening when it was thirty feet below grade. But when it's not, you need to, you know, build it properly. So part of that, like what if I had a concept overlay district? It would probably be, you know, we would spend time looking at the campus with, you know, members of the town, community board members, et cetera. And saying what is a reasonable design aspect? And then what parcels, of course, need to be included? And theoretically, how long does the overlay district last? And what does it allow for? Probably just solar and derivative stuff. I don't imagine you'd want to allow anything else back there, because it's not an industrial area, it's not, doesn't have the access, not meant to be. It might have a shelf life of a couple of years to fit this iteration and not have to make it, I don't know, I've never seen that, but I don't believe there's a reason you can't do it. Just to fit this iteration of organized setup where it's not indefinitely back there. Uh because you also don't want the same, you know, hit and miss dragging seven thousand power lines down the street. Uh that gets really painful too. You can't really put more power lines on the west part of Route twenty without burying them.
Just to follow up on that, so what is, do you think the biggest privately owned solar field capacity right now in the state?
Ooh, how big? In development, probably one of Yeah, built right now would probably be the one up in Spencer East Brookfield.
Yeah.
Or the one in Oxford, Auburn, they're very similar size.
Yeah.
And they're like fifteen megawatts, but they're five years old at this point. Uh it is an absolute leap up in magnitude of size.
There's no triple digit capacity anywhere.
The other biggest one in New England that I'm aware of is in Central Maine, of three corners uh by Long Road. And it's about eight hundred acres and a hundred and fifty-ish megawatts, but it's in the middle of nowhere Maine. Uh you want a transmission connection. Ooh, uh I got, I can give you three towns if I could look it up on the internet, but it's uh west of Bangor, uh more than it is north of Portland. So it's, it's up there.
From Maine.
There you go.
Lots of power.
But it's just, you know, areas all on transmission lines, and they're just targeting for yellow rock.
And I'll honestly, I, I I do site work for solar companies all over.
Okay.
All over New York. And and I've sat on this board, and that's my business. And I there was a strong, strong but headwind against it in this town. And I understand your, I understand your enthusiasm, which is, and honestly, I think it's, it's it's it would be a hard, hard sell for this town and and there's a strong opposition to it, and you'd have to win over a large support, I mean, there's a vocal large support of people that, and we only, we only serve the population. So when they said, even if, even when they said, you know, we're gonna limit it. I said, okay, that's what it's for.
Yep, no, that's, you were representing Yeah, I think on the floor, they voted to, to ratchet it down. And I get why you did it, like you just, so many array, like it's just, it was an unorganized mess, and that's how solar's been so far.
We did it because that's what the town wants. And that's what we
So you have somewhere in there, you know, between my landowners, myself, I would love to be able to build something the board could support or propose would be in a, you know, a proposed amendment at town meeting, you know, for an eventual, you know, not the next one, probably the one after that, maybe. You know, at the end of a first year of putting together, you kind of designed it on paper before you apply to see if people approve of the idea and earn their support. But it's not, you know, drop seven applications on a desk some Thursday afternoon. You know, and like, well, they'll let them reject us, then I'll go to court, like that's, I'll do anything to work around that. Uh so
I mean, we just went through our bylaws, so we just changed our It took us a couple, three years to get, follow his COVID also.
Yeah.
It's not a easy process.
What are you looking at as a time elements? Okay, there's, right now, a lot of this system, not a lot, some of the fields that are built are waiting to get tied in because national grid or
Big giant mess.
Can't accept them. And you're talking about they're gonna increase all of this. What is the time, you probably can't answer this, for them to upgrade their system versus the time that you're gonna build this?
So I can't answer that prospectively based on what they've been told to do and said they'll do. In theory, three year development process for getting to permits and interconnection contracts. Most of that you'll see is doing this kind of work. You know, it's the first year, you're probably running a you know, a push for an overlay district or similar to, you know, make it applicable. In the meantime, you're doing wetlands and interconnection work and all the preliminary permit stuff to get to a real permit level of information. The utilities have been ordered by the DPU and have said they can do it in theory to have all those upgrades done by twenty twenty seven. So in theory, I'm thinking three years of permit work, you know, starting in, you know, twenty-two-ish to twenty-five-ish. And even on that schedule, you end up, you know, about a year or two to get ready to construct it, it's a big ordeal. And then a year or two of construction in total. So that brings you to a twenty twenty-seven-ish arrival date. In theory, you want to finish the array right, you know, about when they're ready to plug you in, so you don't have to sit there forever. There are some arrays in your town that aren't plugged in, that I don't know how the hell they got that financed. Like they just built it without a plan, like just hope, and it's just sitting there, you know, millions of dollars earning interest. Yeah, just like, and there's that one property like to the north on a I think it's only Sturbridge Road, north of the, some property I've got with the Kozlowski's that, they cleared it.
Yeah.
I think, I imagine to hold the building permit or just to do
Exactly, the town of Sturbridge is holding that out.
Yeah, but like, but why they started clearing it, I have no idea unless it was a building permit.
Town of Sturbridge, right, decided to put a tank into the work and not allow the pole to be put in.
Yeah. Town of Warren, Town of Warren is actually suing Warren or folks uh amp energy on a property I used to own and developed is suing Warren for the same thing. Just basically deciding the utility can't use the public way for some reason, which is not how the public way works or utilities, but it becomes a weird like Dover amendment issue as well. You know, what do the towns have the rights to deny?
That, that's where the issue is, you see, private solar company is not a public utility.
But the, but it does use public
National grid won't agree to it unless the town
Yeah, it's like, I mean, they, but National Grid also, it contracts to that group, we will upgrade this. And it's those, their poles on the public way. And when we talk about upgrades, like that's, when you have to get to a public way, that's when I have to use National Grid. Otherwise, you know, if I can hit a transmission line that I can plug into, I could go straight through that. And I wouldn't have to deal with the local distribution, National Grid utility. But that's not how this one looks like it works. You know, in theory, you can connect straight to the transmission network. And you sell like any other power plant. But since I want to go on public ways to get to the Kozlowski property in the, up behind Jennings Way, you cross there, and it is also very useful in other ways for them to be involved.
You getting any feedback from the town of Sturbridge, you said two hundred acres and
Tough crowd, uh same concept, but they've got similar, they disallowed across most of their town, which is literally, literally from the Supreme Court, not congruent with the law. And they have the same type of, you know, language that a, a system on municipal land, it's a little more clear. Is a, is allowed in all zoning districts. So part of the concept here, we just haven't got through the full fire hose. My hope intent is to buy all the land and lease Mr. Cisco's. Is to buy all the land, at least Mr. S- uh, Cisco's. And donate it to the town as part of the solar development. I don't need to own the land. I. Just need the rights to do the solar and then.
Want to own the land?
It depends if the town values the conservation of it. Because the town can conserve it or not. Uh, but I like conserving land as I can with my array. So if I have. Eight hundred acres, I might only have using four hundred and fifty like in this campus. If the town wants the land. It could be donated and conserved as part of the striking the development slash, you know, con- conservation valves.
Then the. Town becomes the land.
Yeah, and then so we would set it at least.
Thing happens.
He would set up a lease or easement back. It's been done twice, once by me. Once again, will be done in Falmouth, that was part of that discussion. And then Amherst did it on a golf course, uh, this last year in South Amherst. So in theory, again, that's town can't be, yeah, town can't be made to do that, but I've found towns that have been very receptive. I don't know. If it's you guys. But it's a.
How was it received?
Decently well, they like, I mean, for a tough crowd, they, they, they like the idea of getting land. You know, that they want to conserve as a town, they don't love the idea of solar happening. Uh.
And they're willing to give up tax dollars on the land?
Well, you're, you're getting ahead of what could be agreed to at all, right? This preliminary conversations. Yo, these are things that, yeah, things that select boards would have to agree to that eventually have a town meeting.
You guys that. Found loophole.
One second, one second. No, that's not what I'm, no, you're getting, you're also getting ahead of me. You are assuming that I'm not going to pay taxes somehow. Sir, please, please let me finish.
Please.
I was in the middle of a discussion. Part of that structure, if you do that, is a lease or easement to the town. They don't have to take that. So obviously you have to replace underlying revenue either via lease rates. Or a straight up payment to a town. Somehow. I don't expect to dump off land to a town and then somehow get out of a pilot or. Land underneath a power plant assessors categories property. So when I did it in Falmouth. We were, or Sandwich on one eighty Cootit Road. We leased a property we gave them. For like twenty thousand dollars a year. In addition. To the pilot money from the system profit. Because you can't. Take away, like, why would they take a property like it off their tax rolls for nothing? But this balance there that the neighborhood liked and the Cape Cod Commission liked. Was that conserve all the solar land? Because then when the solar is done, it's just conserved for nothing. And no one had to pay for it. Because it was a one point eight million dollar piece of land. In Cape Cod that otherwise would have been a forty B property for twenty acres. So that was part of the conservation package they mandated for basically two and a half to one impact to conservation. So we used the property and that kind of started up that. What if solar just conserves land when it does stuff? Because it can. Because no one on my solar side cares what happens to the land after we're done. And we don't need to hold it once we lease it or buy it. We've already paid those costs into the, into the spreadsheet, so.
When you say when you're done, what do you mean?
When the solar comes out of the ground, whenever that is, you know, forty years, whatever. We do. So like we, the, that lease structure, which took a long time to negotiate and work through Sandwich. I did, they didn't easement in Amherst, but the same idea. Uh, they eased the land for that permitted solar, then they donated it with the easement, you know, negotiated with everybody. Uh, you had standard decommissioning stuff, but in that case, the town has, like if it's a lease. Well, now the town has to agree to a lease. The trick to that though, is that leases like that aren't subject to zoning bylaws. That's an agreement between two parties. So what a town can ask for. In that kind of agreement is anything. It's not required to do, it's not zoning. It's what would it take for the, for us to do this in that situation? So that structure, while new and weird. Does create. Leverage that the zoning regulations do not and cannot. There are just some things you can't ask for in zoning, you know, if you really went all the way to the mattress on. So I like that as a cooperative angle, but of course it is more involved. It gives you guys a much. Stronger lever on the project. Because, you know, it's your land, you'd be maintaining it, you know, underlying and maybe you conserve it, maybe you don't, that's up to your town. Uh, but I found that struck the right battles with other towns peoples. When talking about, you know, doing a big solar project. On the Cape Cod Country Club, that was essential. Because they didn't want to turn it into a eight hundred lot subdivision. So the idea of doing half solar and half. You know, conservation now and eventually when the solar was done, it's already conserved and it's a big field. So that's what I have in mind here, if, you know, the towns would like to do that. Not necessary, not necessarily do the solar, but it seems to me better. If it's something that the landowners have the right to do anyway with appropriate regulation, whatever we determine that would be. Then. It seems to be a stronger value and it does have some potential revenue upsides for the town. Replacing taxes, I get better treatment in the solar program if you guys own the land. It's a weird structured loophole, but that's how it's written. Uh, but I'd like to think it eventually sort of evolves to enforce. Cooperation. I get better treatment if you guys want me to, are happy with me being there. Uh, but I've got to earn that treatment because no power on earth can make you give it to me. So.
Who does name your company?
Uh, it's Aries Power Systems LLC. It's just a single person LLC for me to work through.
A R.
A R I E S. I will, you know, and I'm looking now and in discussions now for heavyweight. Uh, owner operator partners. You know, I'm not going to do this myself. No, I'm not an EPC. Uh, so I will look for a permanent owner operator like I worked, I worked with Amp Energy for a number of years. Who own and operate, they don't sell or flip. I don't like the flipping stuff in solar, it's a nightmare. Uh, to take out the expletives. Uh, and it's just sort of an early stage aberration.
That's part of the business.
It is, has been, but the goal is like when I work with folks, I'm not looking for another developer to partner with. I'm looking, even if I'm looking for an owner operator who's going to hold it forever. Because on this size stuff, ideally, you know, they're here and they will be at the hip. When you make a promise, it doesn't get transferred seven times in a permit or something. So the, the quicker you can get to the end owner. Who has the cheapest money, who will end up owning it. Uh, the better off you are because you'll make a deal with people who are going to be writing your checks hopefully for a long time. You can never guarantee someone's ever going to sell it, uh, but you build a house, you don't intend to sell it in year one. A lot of the solar folks, you know, every stage got transitioned. You know, someone would get site controlled and they'd sell it during permitting or right after a permit, then. They'd sell it right before construction and they'd sell it at the end. Early stage stuff, uh, from the solar, we're kind of still in like iPhone two territory. For solar, second inning territory. A lot of that stuff gets beat out of the ecosystem. Uh, as there just aren't, you know, room for seven middlemen. Uh, in the product anymore. And again, sort of this Massachusetts specific item, the way they. Guided the market with their incentive program. I have laws with that.
So what do you expect them to get from the board tonight?
Nothing, just information.
Feedback and stuff.
Yeah, you don't have to give me any feedback, but I want you to like, you should hear it from me, not from, you know, I ran into Bob at, you know, CVS. And he told me they had this big audacious plan and God knows, I don't, yeah, that's grapevine stuff.
I think that pretty much.
Yeah, so you, you, you've got, you've got the, uh, you pretty much got the feel of the, of the, how the board feels.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I think you know what direction, how.
You had something to say.
So I don't.
Informal discussion.
I'm speaking formally.
It's just between the, the gentleman who's.
If he, if he's okay with it, could, could I ask a few?
Yeah, you could ask him outside if you want to, what if, I mean, because there's no like public.
Yeah, there's no public.
Public record of whether you, you asked him a question, he, how he answered it, if he answered it all. That's just, I, it's just formality, I, I apologize.
It's not like a pseudo meeting, it's a presentation. You know, like faces just to understand what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I will probably ask some questions of you in the future.
Yeah.
Of like, here's what I have, like, I don't know what the plan is yet, although I have ideas. Because your input is part of making the plan.
Yep.
So there, I think one of the things you'll get from me is a. You know, a couple, you know, questions document of like, this is what I have in mind. Here's how I think it could, would, should go. Do you have a response?
Got you.
You know, you're not required to, but obviously I think it works better if. You can engage and are willing to.
Yeah, all right. I appreciate you coming and, uh. Doing your presentation as well.
Thank you for the time.
Well, you're representing the town and myself too. So I thank you very much for your time. And we'll see you again, I hope.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to join outside?
Uh, not right now.
Alright, no worries.
Don't, don't wait for me.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, next up, we have some other business. We got an update on the podcast LLC, which at our last meeting. Uh, they were an applicant for a, um, special permit.
Neighbors don't think quite understand the special tender process.
Yeah.
You know, the decision between dying and power the clerk and everything, I think it's still in its twenty day review period. But they came in and they wanted to appeal. They have to appeal to the court. And the whole idea is that we're giving them the ninety day trial period.
Yep.
You know, they want to stop it now and it's like, well. The whole reason why we gave them the twenty, a ninety day trial period to see if it works or not.
Yep.
You know, at the end of ninety days, you know, the board will have an opportunity. Then what, what is, will all be noticed again and we put in the papers, it's like a public notice. I was in the, when the conditions were near approval. And they, so the neighbor could have an opportunity, that kind of come in. And discuss any concerns, you also check with the dog warden at that time to see. You know, any. You know, complaints have been made. And the board has the opportunity to either. Raise it or. Say it doesn't work, you know, the board has an opportunity to basically a second. Fight at the apple, you know, he's in the trial, on a trial here right now. Rather than them jump to appealing something, I mean, they can, they have the right to, but it's like. You given the, the process of chance, you know, because. Board's going to really take the neighbor's concerns into account at that time and if they think it's just not. Workable at that location, then that's when it'll be addressed, so.
Well, we, we didn't ignore them. We had a good discussion about it. I mean, we had a very good discussion about that.
Yeah, we took all the public comment.
I think there's a couple of neighbors that. For whatever reason, didn't make the meeting and now they're, they're kind of making a. To do about it.
Well, I mean, I think we should take the letter as one, actually, what is it, how many signatures? Twenty-five pieces of feedback during this probationary period. Right, we should register.
That letter is in the files, it's going to be kept in the file. The only thing is, uh. I don't know if they approach a neighbor with it and we're in a, it's a gray area. The board should really be giving him that information. Into the board. And to forward it to him.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of like a one sided decision on the.
But we, we should recognize that as twenty-five pieces of negative feedback during their probationary period.
The only thing is, it's not even open yet.
And that's, that's another question is, he's not even open yet. It's nothing to say that he's going to even be open in ninety days. Or, or even full capacity in ninety days. So what happens in ninety days may not be. Predicative of what that business is going to be for the foreseeable future, so.
And that's why I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was very concerned about it, just because there's, you've got. Twenty houses with three hundred feet, you've got almost fifty houses within five hundred feet. That's a well-established neighborhood on a small lot, it's a two acre lot. That's a, that's a, that's a residential neighborhood on a residential lot. And I, I.
I think the one thing that will happen is. Whether he's. You know. Doing it or not is, you know. Questionable, it's probably. But he's having it, so I think the, uh, neighbors will probably say, oh yeah, it's been going on. You know, all during this time and it's been. You know, having dogs on the property, so.
When does the ninety days start? Has it started yet?
No, I think not. I think once the twenty-one day appeal period is. Over, right?
Yeah, I think it's like.
We really didn't. Give a decision. So there's not like the twenty day period yet.
No, it was special permit.
With the ninety day specialization.
I'm sorry.
And I, I guess the, the other thing I'm thinking is like, even if he said, oh, I haven't started yet, so you can't. Start the timer or what, I mean. I mean, if he doesn't start, then it's like he wasn't in good faith and we wanted him, then, no. And you're not going to. Just stretch this out.
And I truly believe that the neighbor, well, oh. Yeah, he's had dogs over there, Aaron Barton and so, so. The board has an opportunity at that point to decide like, you know, this isn't going to work. You know.
Yeah, well, they need to come enforce them and participate.
Well, I think the neighbors get noticed, they will be there, they have concerns. Basically on him right now.
And he could not do anything for. For eighty-nine days and on the. Ninetieth day, okay, I'm open for business and we haven't had any complaints.
Actually diligent for ninety days, but after that.